Good evening, everyone. I would like to welcome you to the Tuesday, July twenty second, two thousand and twenty five Board of Education meeting. We are calling the meeting to order and it is seven oh five P M. And if everyone could please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. A reading of meeting notice. Second. The New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advanced notice of and to attend the meetings of the public bodies at which any business affecting their interest is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the provision of the Act, the Verona Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published in the Star Ledger and posted with the Township of Verona and the Verona Education Association. Postings of this meeting setting forth the time, location, and agenda were posted at the Verona Board of Education office and on the Verona Public School District website. Copies of tonight's agenda and resolutions have been made available to the public via the Board of Education website. Mister Cruz, if you could please call attendance.
Mister Walker?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferrara?
Yes.
Mrs. Prisco?
Yes.
Mrs. Brazala? For the record, Mrs. Brazala's absence there. Mister Boone?
Yes.
We have one.
But by the way, I I went out of sequence.
Oh, yeah.
She was a real rebel.
I'd like it.
Thank you. Moving on to our agenda, I need a motion, please, to approve our um meeting of June twenty sixth, two thousand and twenty five.
So move.
I'll second. Motion by Mister Boone, seconded by Mister Mrs. Ferrara. Are there any discussions? Mister Cruz, if you could call roll.
Mister Boone?
Yes.
Mrs. Prisco?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferrara?
Yes.
Mister Walker?
What a stain. It's about first. Yes, I'm yes.
Okay, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you. And now moving on to our superintendent report by Miss D Giuseppe.
Good evening. Got my papers all over the place. So first, this is the annual report, graduation report. And I put it on to a slideshow. Just I'll go through it quickly. It's that most of the information is actually linked in the agenda. So requirements that um per policy fifty four sixty high school graduation requires a hundred and twenty credits. In specified areas. So you can see the areas that are required. A passing score on a state assessment. Currently, that state assessment is the New Jersey Graduation Proficiency Assessment or a substitute competency assessment. And that could be anything from Accuplacer to the AppLab to um the S A T, S A T uh sub score on one of those tests. The the difference here is that if you don't take the NJGPA, you you can't use that secondary competency test. So you have to at least sit for the NJGPA or a portfolio appeal. So that's when a student does not pass the GPA, does not um have the requisite score on the substitute competency assessment and has to uh do a series of performance assessments that gets scored and sent to the state in a as a as a portfolio. So um I am to report to the board on the total number of students who graduated, those that graduated under the substitute competency test process, those who graduated under the portfolio appeals process, the number of students that receive a state endorsed high school diploma as a result of meeting an alternative proficiency assessment or it that specified in their individual eyes, their I P, their individual, sorry, individualized education program. The total number of students denied graduation from the twelfth grade class and the number of students denied graduation from the twelfth grade class solely because a failure to pass the uh NJGPA. You could advance. Oh. I didn't see it. Thank you. So um. There were a hundred and fifty six students um that graduated uh in June. A hundred and fifty three were V H S graduates, and we had three students graduate from out of district placements. The number of students who graduated under the substitute competency test, twenty nine or eighteen percent, and of those, twenty eight were V H S graduates and one was an out of district graduate. The number of students who graduated under under the portfolio appeals process, twenty three, they were all V H S students. Number of students receiving the state endorsed high school diploma as a result of meeting an alternative requirement specified in their individual individualized education program. Three, one V H S graduate, two out of district graduates. The number of students denied graduation from the twelfth grade class, one student, and that was for attendance. And the number of students denied graduation due to failure to pass the NJGPA, substitute competence test, or the portfolio appeals uh is zero. So I'm not going to go through this. We went through this last year and the year before. It's this is just an anyone. I'll post this to the website. Anybody that is interested in seeing this, it also can be found in the um the high school uh agenda that has our our course offerings. And it's on the high school website. This is just this just goes into those pathways. Again, I'll I'll post this to the website. It's it really um. So here's the second pathway. You can see A C T. I give this just gives us what those um subs- substitute competency test cutoffs um scores would be. So for instance, um for P S A T in reading um uh is you have to get greater than or equal to four twenty. Uh for math or P S A T, you have to get greater than also four twenty. S A T greater than four forty. And I have to advance mine here on my screen because I can't see it from the screen there. Um so any more information about the portfolio process, this is linked right in the in the uh slide deck. So when I put it up, anyone that's interested in reading about that, that will be here for you. So in addition to um, and you can take that down, Mister Perducci. In addition to that, um a lot happens over the summer during the end of June. The first two weeks in July are usually reserved for us to finalize last year's uh school year, filling out all of the Department of Education um reports and filing them. We're in the process of doing that. Uh it's it is now when we would begin to apply for those federal grants, like the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act, the I D E A grant, which we did uh receive um allocation funded allocations for. Um and we're down what eight thousand? Uh we are receiving eight thousand less this year um than we have in the past. The bad news is that we still have not received um any of the allocations for our title fund. Our title funds, um we received about a hundred and one thousand dollars in title funds. Um and I don't know when we're going to get the allocations because the Trump administration has cut billions of dollars from education funding through title allocations across the country. New Jersey has not yet um gotten yet what what they're getting. They know they're getting cut. They don't know what they're getting, and it is now in the courts because Congress allocated um these funds. And uh so the argument is the president does not have the ability to just say Congress allocated these funds for education. Now we're just cutting. We're not going to do it. So it's in the courts, knows how long it's going to be in the courts, and what the outcome is going to be is also up in the air. So um that's one thing that we have not yet begun, and it's a little nerve wracking because August goes quickly. So um. Last year, so the other things that we're we're doing to prepare for opening, we're writing curriculum, we are uh preparing uh taking orders on supplies and resources for staff, planning and maintaining our school buildings, preparing classrooms for next year, and uh any staffing um needs that are still we're still interviewing for. Last year at this time, if you recall, we revised our attendance policy to reduce chronic absenteeism. Uh that had missed mixed effects effects in the first year. Districtwide attendance rates between twenty three, twenty four and twenty four, twenty five with the new attendance policy were flat. It actually went down a little at zero point two percent. I mean, nothing uh changed. Some schools improved their attendance rate. Uh F N Brown, Lanning Avenue, and H B W all saw a better student attendance. Uh Forest Avenue and Brookdale were flat, and V H S saw a minimal decrease in their attendance rate at one point one percent. So um Mister Cogdell had asked if we could, you know, revise the policy. I I I think we wait another year. If it continues to show, we might be able to tweak it for high school students. I don't see one point one percent change in attendance as being all that. It didn't do actually what we thought it would do, uh which is make our student attendance better. But um it's it's something we need to spend another year at least with. When you get a chance, we have a new website. If you haven't been to the new website, um uh this is a cost savings to the district. Uh the old website web hosting uh platform that we were using did not have a communication uh platform with it. We, Mister Bilaj went uh found Aptige, which has both um the website hosting capability. It also has robocall capability, text messaging, and um email. So we have already implemented that. I sent out my first uh mass communication, new program. It functions very similar to the old program, but it's significantly less expensive. What is that, about ten thousand less, Mister Cruz? About ten thousand dollars taken. So the big news um for tonight is that um Verona Public Schools was awarded fifty one thousand seven hundred and five dollars in the Trees for School Grant to cover the costs associated with purchasing and planting trees, including the planning, site preparat- preparation, watering, monitoring, and maintenance over three years. So the Trees for Schools Program is a joint effort of the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection, Sustainable New Jersey, and the College of New Jersey, funded by Regional Greenhouse Gas Initiative Auction Proceeds. The Trees for School Grants will will uh across the state will plant forty five hundred trees at public schools, colleges, and universities. And um we actually applied for this grant in two thousand and twenty three and did not receive it. Reapplied and uh were one of the lucky schools um thirty three schools that received it this year. The funding will enable us to plant trees that not only enhance the beauty of our campuses, but also play a crucial role in mitigating the urban heat island effect. And uh for those that don't know what a heat island is, it is a, I just checked my notes. It's a phenomenon where urban areas experience significantly higher temperatures than their surrounding rural areas. The temperature difference, often more pronounced at night, is primarily caused by human-made structures such as building roads, roads and turf fields, which we have several in district and in the community um uh that absorb and retain more heat than natural landscapes. The incre- the impacts of having multiple heat islands, um heat heat islands in Verona is that um it increases demand for air conditioning, which drives up energy costs and potentially strain the power grid, produces air pollution by increasing the formation of smog and other pollutants. Elevates tem- elevated temperatures can lead to heat-related illnesses, particularly for vulnerable populations, and increased temperatures can affect water quality by promoting growth of algae and bacteria, and obviously uh climate change implications. So we are very happy to be part of the solution um with regard to uh planting trees that are going to not only reduce our carbon footprint, increase our green spaces, help filter stormwater runoff, improves the quality, and reduce um uh a soil erosion and provide our students with the opportunity to understand sustainability and the importance of environmental stewardship. By fostering this deeper connection with nature, we hope to shape the next generation of eco-conscious leaders. So at the high school, we have a proposal to plant twelve large trees. Um some pines, some broadleaf, uh and this would be identified on the lower field, which is identified as an an intense heat island. And then where the band room was uh built, it's going to get uh conifers, are going to get some pines over there. That's what was there prior to the construction. So we're going to try to bring that back. For H B W, they're going to get four medium-sized trees that will significantly improve runoff on the steep slopes. Um the fifth grade is going to be conducting a planting day involving two of the trees, and the classes will track growth and benefits uh in their science classes. And um at the elementary schools, they're going to be conducting planting celebrations carried out by the kindergarten classes as part of the Watch Me Grow program. And students will track the growth of the tree and study its benefits in age-appropriate manner over the years there at the school. Uh the trees at Forest are are going to be placed so that they help collect runoff from the steep slope in front of the school. Landing trees will create shade in the outdoor recreation areas as of all the trees, um but also provide erosion control on the steep slopes um in back by the ball field. We're also planting at the Verona Civic Center, uh one large tree to replace the declining pine um and directly in front of the middle school. And we have six medium trees going into Liberty and Freedom Fields. Uh these are also intensive heat island areas. That is my report for this evening.
Um I I have two quick questions.
Oh, no, I actually have one more. But you ask your question first. Um we are also looking, we spoke to the Education Committee last week about creating um a stipend position for um teacher leaders. Um one of the things we've been talking about here at the board meeting is um it strengthening tier one uh instruction. And um given the fact that we had to riff one of our supervisors, that becomes harder. I am now the superintendent and the science supervisor, with Doctor Miller as the director of curriculum and the math supervisor. And um we want to be able to continue to move this district forward. We had great results this year with what we have begun with regard to instruction. We saw an increase, as you saw last week, uh two weeks ago, uh we had or was it just through email to the board? I did. Okay, we um we met uh several of our our building goals, which are very um high level goals, but we increased our scores in both math and language arts at every grade level, with the exception of ninth grade algebra and ninth grade literacy and uh third grade. So um this is a very it's good for the district to see the second year and a and the second year in a row of of growth in the right direction. Um and we see outcomes are better for our students. To keep that momentum going, we're going to need to continually provide instruction to and professional development to staff to continue to increase um the effect of better tier one instruction for our students. Uh so we have a a little bit of breakage, not enough breakage for a a teaching staff, and we need more than one if we were looking at at across the elementary world. But it we do have some breakage from uh the high school, the position of high school media specialist that we can um allocate fifteen hundred dollars to several key positions, teacher leaders across the district to be turnkey um uh supporters of professional development initiatives. Some mentoring and um and some uh communication. Uh they're going to be providing some professional development, turnkeying some professional development, and being just instructional leaders within their grade level or department. So I will share uh with you the job description. We're still working on it. I'll share with you the job description and expectations for that for those positions. And um at some point when we have finalized what it looks like, we'll come back to the board for approval. Now I'm done.
Oh. Now, um back on the graduation report, uh two things. I guess um looking at it from a high level, what what would your headline be on that in terms of student success?
Oh, for the graduation? That that we graduated all but one student, and I have to tell you, we uh we worked hard at getting her graduated, and it was just to her attendance. It couldn't, she couldn't make it.
The the other question I had on that, is there a way, and maybe it's probably not for this report, but to track what next steps are for our students? So we have a sense of, you know, who's going to, well, a majority are going to some form of college or university, but also real curious to see um additional education, like are they going to trade schools and stuff like that? And are we able to break it down in this report, or is that something that we need to wait for?
Well, we can, we can certainly do it through surveys. Um they're not well responded to generally through post-graduation surveys, but we could do it through surveys. Um we know it's never, it's not really effective until after year four or year five, because so many students, not just from Verona, but from across high schools across the country change schools mid-year. And it's very common for students to think they want to go to Duke or or Rutgers and um get there and not like it and then transfer. So um it's that's why the state looks at the four the four-year graduation rate of college of post-secondary. Uh we can, I talked to Mrs. Ackerman about setting up some way to communicate with our students that have graduated and see where they are. And um I know you ran into a student in uh and it was at the park?
Yeah, it was in the park.
Yeah, so you got um Mister Boone ran into one of our students who graduated and is going to be working for Apple.
Yeah, graduated from Verona High, and I don't feel I'm at liberty to disclose names at this point, but it was a twenty twenty one graduate. Um they go to MIT and is uh got landed a job at Apple. So it's those kind of success stories, I think, are great to celebrate where we can.
Yeah, and we can certainly, I'll talk to Mrs. Ackerman about setting up some kind of a post um post-secondary um survey about what are you doing now?
For for every other piece of data we get, right? There's less than ten kids. We don't give an explanation. We kind of redacted or whatever. Um but with this report, we're not, I guess, because it's not a state report, but well, would you consider, what what are your thoughts about, you know, next year moving forward? If there's one person in a category and they become identified by that, just not bringing that category up?
Uh this is in, this is in a ministry code. And those cat and the categories I've reported on are
You have to give those. So there's one, there's nothing you can do about that? That's why I don't worry about it.
It's wild, right?
Yep.
And I just want to quickly circle back to the um to, you know, the information you shared about the the leadership positions. Um I I first want to just commend you because I do know over the past two years, three years that you've been here. Three, right? Is it three? Have seen what what seems to be much more structured when it comes to professional development, and I believe um that that's one of the most important things that we can give to our to our teachers to ultimately support our students. Um I think also with this, you know, the idea and it and I'm again, I I know that that you know this, I'm just kind of sharing it out here, is really that, you know, as we're piloting this um new initiative, um you know, if it if it does go forward, that we really do continue to, you know, ensure that whoever these whoever the the instructional leaders are, that they're meeting very specific professional development and using our goals when planning. Um because like with everything, right, things can get become overwhelming. So I do think that as we're rolling this out, we're really specific about what our goals are, whether it be classroom management and instruction or small group and whatever it is, and then kind of really focus maybe on that as we're as we're rolling this out. Um so that I think as a board and as a community, um we know exactly kind of what is is being touched upon for these for this new role.
Well, and I think for right now, our our main focus is um because last year we adopted the Marzano-focused teacher evaluation model, which is not simply an evaluation model, it's an instructional model. And um that's our focus, and there's there are twenty three protocols in that model, so there's plenty to focus on over the next couple of years. Uh which is why it's so important that we have some form of teacher leadership emerge who really understand the model and can help their colleagues understand the model, because if we don't, if we don't do it this way, it becomes a compliance model versus a growth model. And we have an instructional model, we have an evaluative model, they are linked together significantly. We don't want something that was designed to be a growth model to be a compliance model, because that's what was happening here prior.
Right, right. And it's a great way, it's a great way to do this, and I think to empower teachers, and I think with the, you know, like you just said, if we're focusing on the evaluations, and we can, we can track that with data to see where the improvement is with teachers and also with our students. So it's exciting.
And and we, you know, when you look at the evaluation model, and maybe I'll do a presentation for the board on this in another time, you're looking at the protocols, which are strategies, um identified strategies that are high-yield strategies. So with strategies that have been identified through either Robert Marzano or John Hattie or Dylan, like big-time well-renowned meta-researchers. So we know that those high-yield strategies only work if they're done with fidelity. I mean, Bob Marzano wrote a paper, a white paper on the fact that I said high-yield strategies work, but not if you're not using them right, right? So um we do need to make sure that our teachers understand what those high-yield strategies are and how to implement them effectively so that we do see a trickle down to that outcome, those outcomes for kids. So there's, there is plenty to work on, and there's uh it's very difficult when you have three district-level supervisors, one, a director and two supervisors and a superintendent at the at the district level. And I mean, obviously, we have a principal in every building. Um but it is those that those district-wide initiatives, if you're a teacher, you know this, like they're not going to fly building level unless you have district, you're driving it from the district.
Thank you. Does anyone have any other questions? Moving on to our business administrative report, Mister Cruz.
Uh good evening, everyone. Um I hope everyone is enjoying and having a restful rejuvenated summer. While the academic portion of our summer session is winding down um and ending this month, um this continues to be a very active uh month for us, especially for the Business Office, Buildings and Grounds. Our Buildings and Grounds Department is working diligently, preparing our schools' facilities for the return of our students and staff. Uh and everything is is on schedule and going to be in excellent shape for the start of the new school year. At the same time, the Business Office is in the process of closing out the twenty four, twenty five fiscal year, preparing for our annual fiscal audit, uh which uh will uh be taking place in late September. And we anticipate that the audit results um will be finalized and shared with the board and the public in the month of November. Uh also, I would like to uh give a brief update on our school meals program, Pomtonian. Our school uh food service uh management um provider uh introduced a healthier menu option for the twenty five to twenty six school year. Uh one of the uh enhancements that they'll be bringing on. Uh and this this actually has been work from the Nutrition Committee and and meeting and having conversations with Pomtonian, uh which is called a farm-to-table items. Um this will be more like a buffet bar at the high school and middle school. Uh also with each meal, and this is not an additional cost to our students. Um is this will be provided with each meal will be a cup of uh fresh fruits and veggies um that they will be able to select when they pick up their meals. Uh the Nutrition Committee also uh will continue uh meeting um coming September to uh uh see how this program uh takes off in the start of the school year. Uh we also are planning to conduct a uh survey just to gather feedback in October, November from families and students uh to see if there's any other things that we could actually uh introduce to our menu options. And then lastly, uh including tonight's uh financials is the Secretary's um uh Treasury Report and the Transfer Report for the month of May. Um please to uh report that they're all in agreement. Uh the reports for June uh should be finalized soon, and then we'll be reporting those out uh next month. Uh that concludes my report for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mister Cruz. Does anyone have any questions or comments?
I do. Sorry.
Um I I have a quick question with respect to Pom- Pomtonian.
Yes.
Um. I believe that there, I I think that there's some type of law that you can't deny children food, right? If they don't, right? I I think that there is. I'm not sure exactly what it is. However, with that being said, at the middle school, I know, um and I believe at the high school, but I think this is mostly a middle school issue where kids are able to purchase, even if their balance is negative or like, is there any way for parents to be able to shut off that their um where am I looking for? Their, their account, so that if they're sending lunch to school with their kids, their child is eating that lunch, and I know as a parent, we can say don't go and buy anything else, right? But it's a, they do, and right? So I'm just curious, as we're trying to kind of navigate how to handle this, because I think that it is, it is an issue. You know, I've seen it personally as a parent, I've heard from other parents that it's a problem, and we're getting charged, and then we have the fees for the services, and it becomes like thousands sometimes, I mean, very, very expensive. So is there any way for us to be able to do that?
So I guess I thought out of, out of a, kind of like a school food account. So they, that, that could be
Or if it's at zero, it doesn't
So, so the reason why we allow it to go into arrears up to, I think it's like twenty-five dollars, is for the very reason that if they don't have the funds, don't want to say no, and, you know, they don't have the five dollars.
Which I, I understand and agree with, I'm not
And that, that's the rationale behind that, but it, the school also sends out a message, like a reminder, you know, your, your meal counts.
But then if that's the case, right, could, could we do something where if a child doesn't have lunch, they can go and get lunch, but they can't get cookies and chips and Snapple?
Yes, the, the, the arrears, once they're, the account is arrears, they won't be able to do the à la carte items, like the snacks or
Is arrears just zero, or is that if you haven't paid after a certain amount?
Below zero, below zeros is, is in arrears. They, they could only pick up a lunch. And, and that's it. No, yeah. No, no grandma cookies, no.
Anybody other questions? Moving on to our committee reports, we just have finance. Did you?
Yeah, just a couple of quick things. Jorge covered a bulk of it, but just probably three things here. We have completed the removal of the documents from the rooms in the high school that are going to be repurposed for instructional space. These documents, the next step is to have a proposal together for documented retention and scan them for longer-term archiving. I believe there are next steps involved there. Moving along on the HVAC updates, the, there was a meeting with the architects, they're working on next steps for the project. We will be putting up in front of the board for the bidding process and the plan to work for spring of next year. And then lastly, the involving the playground update, the again, some steps continue in terms of the mediation. There was a successful inclusion of, in the mediation of the construction manager and the architect and the subcontractor. And then there's going to be some legal fees associated with that. The architects themselves were found not liable since the scope was followed by the contractor. But the construction management and contractor will remain in that mediation. Do I have that right? Okay, that's
Thank you. Does anyone have questions?
I just have a, a quick comment regarding HVAC, since we're sitting here, it's freezing. Does this air run constantly? Because I feel like that could be a waste of money if it's running all the time and nobody's using this room. Maybe we can have Dennis look into that, because thank you. Well, it's a little chilly in here today.
Okay, moving on to our agenda, if there's anyone from the public that would like to come up and speak on any agenda action items that we will be voting on, please feel free to come to the podium and state your name, and you have three minutes. Thank you.
Evening, everyone. I'm Matt Perna, thirty-two Hillcrest Harris. I have a general question on A-five and A-six. And I may have asked something similar in the past, and I'm just not remembering, but there's been in prior agendas, lots of movement at the middle school level, especially specific to math and different, like, changing of grades fifth and sixth. Could you just remind me if I did ask before, or to give some background information on why there's been this shuffling and it's, it feels like it's limited to the middle school?
Yes, it, it is because we are changing the schedule, the way the schedule works. So for grade five, teachers will be not just teach, so right now, our, last year, I should say, was the last year that we're going to be treating fifth graders like middle school kids, because they're only there because because of space. They're not there because we have a philosophy that a fifth-grade student should be following a middle school schedule, but they were following a middle school schedule. And as a result, they were getting forty-five minutes a day of math and language arts instead of the recommended sixty minutes of math and ninety minutes of language arts. So because we're making that change, we're changing the structure of the fifth grade, so that teachers that taught science last year or math, this year will be teaching math and science, and then conversely, social studies and, and language arts. So we, we did some shifts there. We moved some people, and you're seeing so for A-five and A-six, these are reversals. So they wanted to move Mr. Galbichak and Dr. Miller and Mr. Stevenson had initially wanted to move Mrs. Donahue and Mr. Palazzo to grade six. And after discussion with the teachers and discussion with the principal and assistant principal, we decided to leave them in their current placement. And so that's where you're seeing these changes.
And then I guess a more specific question on B-eight. And maybe I just don't have enough information. I was curious as to why the tuition for the high school is so much more expensive than it is for HBW. Assuming that's a full year.
That's a good question, and that is a staff rate, so it's a staff child for HBW, so it's a much lower rate. Yeah, we have a, in our contract with the teachers, we have an agreement that they get a reduced tuition rate. And it's not just a reduced tuition rate, it's also, our rates were much lower. And so when the state came out and said you have to charge your per pupil cost for tuition, for tuition in, we petitioned the county office and said, we, we have people that are already in our district at these lower rates to go from, let's give you an example, fifty-six hundred dollars to fifteen thousand in one year is cool. So we got permission to grandfather them to the next, so it's not just, it's an old tuition rate and a staff rate.
And is that thirteen thousand three hundred? Is that like, that's the non-staff?
That's the non-staff.
Grandfather.
Right, correct.
And is that relatively similar high school, middle school, elementary school, or is it?
You know what? I can actually tell you what that is. Go to our website. Twenty percent? That's, that, that staff pays twenty percent of our, yeah, but I'm looking for
Both parks fine. It's more curiosity.
It's a little different for each of, each of the grade levels. So for kindergarten, it's thirteen thousand four forty, grades one to five, fifteen thousand four twenty-two. Grade six to eight, fifteen thousand two thirty-three. And grades nine to twelve is sixteen oh ninety-one, and I lied to you, because that thirteen three oh five was the, was the grandfather tuition.
And for a not, like, I guess, could you give an example of like a non-staff student?
Or we have several students that come from West Orange, come from Belleville, they don't want to go to their, their school there, so they just get, they apply and they give us pay the tuition. Sometimes it's a school district that's sending a student here. And that could be for special education. We had a student a couple of years ago that was coming here from an area school, because there had been bullying in her school. And so they didn't want to continue that process, so they sent the student here. The, I'm trying to think of we have, we have several special education students that the district pays us, and then we have parents who, who choose to pay, you know, sixteen thousand dollars versus the thirty-five thousand that they're going to pay at Moncar MKA.
Yeah, and in both cases, if you have a family member, or you're just sort of paying full freight out of pocket, is that like an application process?
It is. It's an application process, it's an interview process. At any time, if there's behavior issues or grades drop, we have, we reserve the right to stop accepting, and we are currently not accepting any tuition in students at K-eight, because we don't have a room.
Thank you.
But as first point, why does a board need to approve a staff member going from grade five to grade six? Why would we, why would we have to approve that?
We don't have to approve it. We do it so that we can keep, so that it's transparent and it's on there, and so that when payroll looks at the board agenda, they can make those changes. It just, it keeps the board informed, and it also keeps a record of, of the changes. We do have to when you're changing schools. So if you're transferring school to school, the board does have to approve. So we just try to, any change we make, we put on there so that we have a record, it's transparent.
Thank you, Mr. Perna, for your comments. Does anyone else have any? Moving on to our agenda, discussion items or any new business? Does anyone have anything they would like to? I know it's cold.
I just want to talk about, I want to, I have something I would like to discuss. I'm going to be quick, because I'm freezing. I would just like to report out the Verona Summer Music Program. I was there on Wednesday and saw the Lion King Kid version and Rock of Ages Youth Edition. They did a phenomenal job. In the short period of time, they had to learn everything, and I just wanted, yeah, it's incredible. Every year, it's just so amazing to see what these young students are doing out on stage. I, I, it's amazing. So the entire production staff, crew and the pit musicians and all our students, and obviously, there's so many Mr. Morton and everybody, just really, really incredible. So they did two shows this year. First half was, like I said, the Lion King for the younger students, and then Rock of Ages for the older. And I believe that's seventh and eighth, go, and going into high school? Yeah. Yes, they did two, yeah, so it was great. It was really excellent.
I, I just think the costuming, everything is so
Yeah, the set.
On.
Yeah, it was really, really great, so. Any correspondence?
Respondence.
Moving on to our agenda, I will need a motion, please, to approve our personnel resolutions. A-one through A-eight. Motion by motion by Mr. Walker, seconded by seconded by Mr. Boone. Any discussions? If you could please call roll.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Mrs. Farrar?
Yes.
Mrs. Prisco?
Yes.
Mr. Boone? Motion carries.
Great, thank you. Moving on to our education resolutions, I need a motion, please, to approve resolutions B-one all the way down to B-ten. Motion by motion by Ms. Farrar, seconded by
Seconded.
By Mr. Walker. Are there any discussions?
I just have a quick question. For the courses that are running, I don't remember exactly what the policy is for the number of students in a class for the class to run, but these ones that will say this will likely increase enrollment, at what point? Like, are any, is the, is the accounting with three students or French with five, are they at risk for not running? And if so, at what point will we know that?
Most likely, they will run with ten. What happens is so what Mrs. Ackerman did last week is she went, there were, there were like twenty more, and she went in and balanced. So this is the result of, like, for instance, accounting, there are other accounting sections, but these students could not change, because they had a singleton, they had a core course, they had something else during that section. So what the counselors will do now is they'll call these kids down, because this is a semester-two course, and they'll say this course is going to close, these are the options.
Okay.
Or this could be an option and it could get larger.
Okay, so even though we're, we're approving this tonight,
you don't have to approve it. This is me asking the board, do you want to approve this?
Okay, so then, but so what, so my concern is if we don't approve it, how do we, are, do, are we still ensuring that these three students are able to get that class? Like, because it says here they'll likely increase, this will likely increase in enrollment. When will we know? You know, I don't, I don't want to knock, I don't want to vote something down. If it's going to increase and we're going to be able to offer it to students, but also
As we're moving, unfortunately, not until we're moving into semester two, when kids are shuffling, there's yeah, but at that point, yeah, it's hard to balance. I mean, then the teacher's not if we change this class, the teacher's not working full-time, it gets sticky.
Yeah.
If we approve it and it only still has three students, are, are we stuck with it? Or, okay. Yeah, that's I just thought that that left it open, but didn't necessarily.
Yeah, so tomorrow, is tomorrow Thursday? Tomorrow's Wednesday. Thursday, no, tomorrow I have a meeting with the high school administrative staff and Mrs. Ackerman and Dr. Miller, because we're seeing, so as a result, not having enough electives outside of the art department at the high school. The art department was, had class sizes of thirty-two, thirty-three. And, and they were huge. And you have kids that are in the art classes because of graduation requirements, and kids that are in the art classes because they want to study art, and it was a huge class, and it was really problematic. So two years ago, we added an art teacher at the high school. We also restructured how we offer electives. So now we have, we have a, a concern that our art classes are getting smaller, and it's, we have to balance. So we're going to be looking at the direction we're moving regarding staffing at the high school going into twenty-six, twenty-seven. Yes, twenty-six, twenty-seven. I can't believe I'm talking about twenty-six, twenty-seven. So you should see, we should see fewer of these. Now, for instance, French one, that's, we are trying to build back the French program, although we did meet this week, last week, on, on our world language program in general and what's happening there, because we do see declining numbers across French. And I'm not sure that offering French one is really going to be the final goal, be all of our problems with, with language. We will be reporting to the board our, our action plan. We're, we're creating a strategic plan for world language and moving forward. But AP French obviously has six students in it. It doesn't generally have more than five or six students, but students can't get that any other way.
Do they allow sign language as, as a language?
Yes.
They allow that?
The American Sign Language, ASL, yeah.
Awesome.
Yeah. I think one of, one of the things that, and I've been talking about this for two years, and I think we just have to make a commitment monetarily, this was not the year to do that. Virtual high school will solve a lot of our problems. Virtual high school is a phenomenal virtual school that allows school districts to purchase seats. And students can choose from any of the APs, any, over a hundred and fifty different electives across all areas. They have remediation, they have credit recovery, and they have enrichment classes. When I was in my former district, we offered it because we did not have the staff or the money to offer all of the electives that our kids want. And our students had a really good experience with virtual high school. Even the students taking the AP courses, because we did not offer as many AP courses in my former district than we do here. So kids were taking AP Economics, they were taking AP Mandarin and getting fours and fives. So it's a, it's a quality school, it's a really inexpensive way to bring a wide variety of electives, but it is that unique student that's going to work at a self-paced online course.
I don't know if you watched the, I don't know if it was a rerun, but the sixteen-minute piece on Khan Amigo, that looked like it's going to be game-changer for online, virtual schools and things like that.
I didn't. When was that on?
I saw this past Sunday night.
Okay.
It's Khan Academy, but it's, it's there, they partnered up with, with AI, and the AI teacher is going to work with the, the AI is going to work with both the student and the teacher to get them through a curriculum, and the way I, the way it was presented The way I, the way it was presented, it looked very, very workable and it looked really, it, it didn't look like it was going to outsource teaching, but it looked like it was going to be. A tool that, you know, who wouldn't want to have this?
He's amazing. I mean, what he did, Sol Khan, what he did, uh, just to link. Learning, so right now, I don't know whether you're aware, um, but when you take an SAT or a PSAT, when you take a PSAT. Um, and you are a, a free customer of the Khan Academy. Uh, you can upload your scores and your, where you had problems and, and they will, and you get a, uh, like a. Customized program of remediation and it's all free and it's just, uh, it's amazing. Yeah.
Thank you. Mr. Cruz, if you could please call roll.
Mr. Walker?
I'm going to abstain from B three and then yes to everything else.
Uh, Mrs. Farrar?
Yes.
Mrs. Prisco?
Yes.
Mr. Boone?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Moving on to our athletics resolutions, I need a motion, please, to approve resolutions C one. Through C seven. Motion by Mr. Walker, seconded by.
Second.
By Mrs. Farrar. Are there any discussions? Seeing none, Mr. Cruz, can you please call roll?
So Walker?
Yes.
Mrs. Farrar?
Yes.
Mrs. Prisco?
Yes.
Mr. Boone?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Moving on to facilities, uh, we have one on for D one. I need a motion to approve resolution D one. Motion by Mr. Boone, seconded by Mr. Walker. Are there any discussions? Mr. Cruz, if you could call roll?
Yes.
Mr. Walker, yeah. Mrs. Farrar?
Yes.
Mrs. Prisco?
Yes.
Mr. Boone?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Moving on to our finance resolutions, need a motion to approve our resolutions E one.
Uh, I, just to, um, interject, uh.
Sorry.
E five, if we could, uh, do a motion to table. I just noticed that, um, some of the, the amounts are not correct.
Move to table E five.
We will.
Second.
Okay, so we are motion, uh, we are tabling E five. So I need a motion then to approve E one through E four. And then E six through E seven.
I will make that motion.
Motion by Mr. Walker, seconded by.
I'll second.
Mrs. Farrar. Are there any discussions? Mr. Cruz, if you could please call roll?
Mr. Walk?
Yes.
Mrs. Farrar?
Yes.
Mrs. Prisco?
Yes.
Mr. Boone?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Great, thank you. And then on to our governance.
Wait to vote to move the other one?
Twipped him.
The, the.
The table.
Table, um, yes.
Okay, so then I need to, we did the motion and seconded, so I just need a roll call for E five.
Or tabling E five.
Yeah.
Uh, Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Mrs. Farrar?
Yes.
Mrs. Prisco?
Yes.
Mr. Boone?
Yes.
Motion carries to table E five.
Thank you, Mr. Walker, for picking that up.
You've got it.
I need a motion, please, for governance and policy for resolutions F one through F two. Motion by Mr. Walker, seconded by.
I'll second.
Mrs. Farrar, are there any discussions?
Anything changed in the conduct of board meetings or the?
No, that is, uh, yeah.
We are changing it, um, to reflect the fact that.
About me?
We have, no, it's not about you. No, we have been since the pandemic, um, allowing, uh, virtual, um, attendance at our confidential sessions. And that is a no-no. So only in the, only during a, um, a declared emergency can we do, uh, attendance at a confidential session remotely.
Um, we're good, right? That was the only question you, you threw me off though. Um, Mr. Cruz, if you could please call roll.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Mrs. Farrar?
Yes.
Mrs. Prisco?
Yes.
Mr. Boone?
Yes.
Motion carries.
I'm glad it wasn't about you, Mr. Walker.
And I'm planning to see that evaluation of teacher policy. That's great. Right in line with our goals.
Okay, moving on to public comments on any items, please feel free to come up to the podium, state your name and you'll have three minutes. Seeing none? Right? Confidential, our motion, I need a motion, please, to adjourn.
So move.
Motion by Mr. Boone.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Walker. I know I do miss Ryan too. Our next scheduled public meeting will be held on Tuesday, August twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-five. Beginning with confidential session at six PM and public session at seven PM in the Verona High School Learning Commons. Um, our meeting is adjourned and it is eight PM. Everyone enjoy the rest of the, uh, summer. Great, thanks for coming out. Our next meeting is August twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-five.